So just for our athletics and activity, those that are held in the code of conduct, um, obviously we want to start off with our numbers and some, some data. So we had 231 uh which sports participants. That is a little bit down from fall, but in the fall you have football and soccer, which alone is 250 kids. So if you take those sorts out, we're about on track with our other sports. And uh, but the winter it's also tough because you're inside. You have, you have confines, you have to abide by just for safety and for use of time. Uh, our GPA was up one one hundredth of a point. We went up to three point four four in semester one for 24, 25. Um, it's one of the unique things about our winter sports is it's one of the only sports that transcends multiple grading periods. So, so they get checked twice while most sports only get checked once. So that was awesome to see that that grade is maintaining and if not improving a little bit between sports. We had 133 letter winners, that means varsity contestants. Thirty-nine of those were first time uh letter winners and eight of those was their second or third sport. There's even a couple of freshmen that already had their second or third letter um in the second season of the year, so that was, that was great for me to see. Um, within our conference, big eight, for most of our sports, our girls hockey team is in the uh Badger Conference. We had 29 all-conference honorees. With that, we had two big eight coaches of the year. So like I've said, uh, it continues to be the coaches and the advisors and all that that really lead the way and have been helping our student athletes find success. Most of our whole area, region, state are to be determined. Like I said, we're just wrapping up the uh state. Um, but we will highlight some of those later on. Uh, within the individual realm, we have state championship in the floor with Julie Marcusana, so props to her, she's a junior coming back next year hopefully. And then we had nine podium finishes between the individual sports, which is uh swimming, swim and dive and uh gymnastics. Started with their boys basketball, there is an asterisk up there, um, just because when this was created, their season was not done, but they unfortunately lost last Thursday. So they ended up 27 this year. Um, they won a regional title for the first time since 2015 in Coach Robinson's third year at the realm. Um, when I was doing some numbers for the WIA, I found out that Coach Robinson has passed 150 victories as a, a head coach, so that was a cool honor to see and I, I gave him a little shout out for that. Um, and then they did lose to Wanakee, who was in the state uh tournament this weekend in the sectional semifinals. Our girls basketball program won the big eight conference for the fourth consecutive year. Um, big shout to Coach Rick, uh, Richardson and her team for continued success and continuing to find a way. Uh, they also won a regional title, um, they lost in the sectional semifinal, uh, but they had a lot of great successes. There's a lot of question marks around this team just because they lost a lot of top-end talent from the previous year and the, the girls put in the work and they followed the plan and it worked out for them, so that was great to see. And Coach Lexi Richardson was one of our two big eight coaches of the year, so wanted to give her a special shout out because, you know, she, her and I go way back, you know, there's a picture of us playing basketball together when we were kindergartners over at the old, old Sugar Creek, so we uh, her dad makes sure to know that she can still beat me in basketball, which I agree. Uh, our girls hockey program, um, they went five and seven in conference, six, sixteen and one overall. Um, it was a rebuilding, you know, a growth year for them as well. Um, they have a coach that seems interested in the long-term, which is awesome. So Middleton leads this co-op, but uh Jamie Sims, the AD over there and I work pretty close together along with uh Madison West, Madison Edgewood, Madison Memorial perform this co-op. Um, we had five participants on this team this year, um, two of which were captains, which was always great to see that, you know, our, our leadership transience was more than just our school district. Um, they also made the sectional semifinals where they lost to the Beaver Dam co-op. Our boys hockey program had a share for conference for their eighth consecutive year, so they've won conference eight years in a row now, um, that's pretty cool to see and hear. Um, sixteen and eleven, they lost to a lot of good competition. They uh also won regionals and then they lost to Edgewood in the sectional final. Um, Coach Viser uh did a great job this year with uh an unproven team and the team really came together to show who, what it means to play wildcat hockey and that was great to see and very thankful for the community and, you know, that's always one of those sports that gets a lot of support and so it's great to see. And for all that hard work, Coach Viser was honored as the big eight coach of the year by his um counterparts. Our girls gymnastics team, um, we do co-op with Edgewood for this. They were conference champs again this year, uh, seven and O, and they also won the conference meet with both the varsity and JV team. They, they won team sectionals and they advanced 11 in individual events. Um, in talking to Coach before, um, she said there was a chance to do that and they followed through, the girls competed well. Um, I was fortunate enough to make it up to the state uh meet on that Friday and watch them competing, the team, and that, that's a really cool atmosphere up in Wisconsin Rapids and they got third, um, maybe not where they wanted to be, but they, they thought it was a very competitive field and at the end of the day, it comes down to, you know, everyone performing, they did a great job. And as I mentioned, we did have the individual state champion on the floor with Zoe Marcusan. And that is the third place team, so those were the, the eight gymnasts that represented us out on. Um, and this year it was all eight grown up students, you know, they all came from D A H S. Um, that's where the girls obviously were a valuable part of this team as well, but this year it happened to be all eight and only one of them is a senior, so you know, that's hopefully exciting things for what's ahead. Our boys swim, uh, dive team, they won conference duels for the first time in big eight history. Um, this is a very strong swimming area with the history between Memorial, Madison West and Middleton, so being able to do that is a big credit to Coach Werber, um, his staff and obviously the swimmen and divers. Uh, they got sectional in, second in sectionals and they advanced 15 individuals and for the first time in division one history, they got second place, so they were state runners up, so that completed the Coach Werber second place sweep for the year where both boys and girls. Um, and that was the highest finish in D one history. They did have some championships in division two back in the late nineteen nineties, um, but that was really cool. I think the team was happy how they came together, so that was great to witness. And that is the team that was up there and obviously they, they had a blast and Coach Werber out here did want to give that trophy up. Wrestling, we'll have three slides here just because um we, we were in a cool situation where we're at, so this is the combined team. So they competed in duels together, they were six and three, they got second in the conference meet with five individual champs. And then we get into our boys wrestling, so starting um two years ago, the WIA started a girls wrestling individual championship, so previous to that, they would have to compete with the boys weights and with the boys and the interest started to grow. So two years ago, they were in lacrosse during the state tournament. Last year they were in the Cole Center with everyone and this year they're with the Cole Center. And next year they're making the move with girls to uh make it a team side as well, so we'll get to that with them. So the boys team, once you get into regionals, was just for the boys. Um, so they ended up advancing two to state with the podium finish with uh Carson Brenner getting sixth uh at a hundred and fifty-seven pounds. And then our girls program, um, Coach Ott, this is one of the things he really pushed when he, you know, past couple of years talking to him, last year they were able to get, I believe, five or six girls out and they really bought into the concept of bring a friend or two. And this year they were up to 20 girls. So like I was mentioning, next year the WA uh, you have to declare at the beginning of the year if you want to wrestle boys or girls, so they still have that choice if they choose to wrestle on the boys team they can. Um, but our girls team is strong in numbers, there was five or six seniors, but I, I think if we keep building the way we have, uh, we're going to be one of the bigger teams in the state. We hosted the big eight girls wrestling showcase this year here at D A H S. Uh, it went from about thirty competitors last year to we were at about ninety this year, so even within the area, it's really growing. Uh, they also had two qualifiers for state, so overall our wrestling team had four. And just some overall uh department updates, uh, we started our student athlete initiated leadership group sale, uh, on three, six, we had our first meeting. Um, and it was really cool when you take, start something new and kind of, I don't want to say force students, they applied and all that, uh, you don't know what the vibe is going to be, right? And all the feedback competing is awesome, the kids love it, they love the idea of it and that was the purpose of it. We want to give that student voice within our athletics and activities program. Um, obviously we're starting with athletics because those are the students that um I have a little more, you know, insight with the coaches and they see them usually three, four years, but it's something we hope to grow into our activity side as well. Uh, we started an alumni update that highlights our student athletes that are out in college or in college playing, um, that's something that we're going to put on the Fieldhouse TV just to highlight, I mean, I think we ended up with fifty-something student athletes that are still competing at the second level, our post-secondary level, which is awesome to see. Um, we do have two of our head coaches that are returning from the fall for their coaching vacancies, so I was glad that they enjoyed their experience and want to come back. And then going forward, spring sports started last week, um, we have three more rolling out today, four, four technically, softball, boys and girls lacrosse start today and then baseball starts their conditioning week where they're allowed an extra week of pitching pretty much to allow them uh those teams to be ready. Um, we're starting to schedule a twenty-five, twenty-six athletics kickoff meeting just to get some of those district-wide things knocked off right away and to also kind of unite, just like we do as a district staff at the beginning of the year, to come for a common purpose, common goal for the year. It's something that the coaches have asked for and it's something that I want to pursue. And also get some of these um stakeholders here, so you know, the nurses where they have to do the, these EpiPen trains and stuff like that. It's tough because our coaches are here from four-thirty to nine-thirty most nights and our nurses work eight to four, so trying to find a way to meet them in the middle and um get an opportunity to help um our coaches meet the district's uh requirements to be staff members and such. And then finally, we are in the process of hiring our boys hockey coach. Uh, we finished interviews last week, so now just kind of in that reflection process and trying to figure out the direction we want to go. Do you have any questions for me?
We appreciate you coming in and helping.
Oh, and now all the highlights.
It's exciting.
It's like SportsCenter for.
Yeah, I know, it's uh. I could, I, I'd spend a lot of time on Hova, but I don't know how much on that. No, I, I was doing some reflection, I was very fortunate, it's like, you know, like Dr. Clarity said, like, the winter season becomes a grind, especially towards the end when, you know, we had hockey and uh girls basketball kind of overlapping gymnastics in there and just my biggest thing is I want our students to feel valued, right? And part of that is me being places and I'm very lucky, I got a very supportive home and, you know, my wife understands, like, hey, I have to go to this game, I have to go up to Rapids. Um, and I tell people, I'm lucky, I get paid to watch sports now, right? Like at the end of the day, there's a lot of people that wish they got paid to watch sports and, you know, there, there's more to it, but um, I'm unfortunate and like now, like Dr. Clarity said, you know, this week, next week, it's kind of a, a down period for me, which is nice and then spring sports ramps up and as Chad said right before this, that's more of the, what do I get to reschedule this weekend, not so much the, you know, what's happening, but um, I'm lucky I got a great staff, you know, Teresa and Sydney do a great job supporting me and then we have a great group of uh staff workers that help work for me, so it makes my job easier, it makes me able to do things that, you know, other athletic directors aren't able to do, so I'm very fortunate to be here and thank you all.
Thank you again for also highlighting the academic success of our student athletes and that's a really, really powerful thing to see that to the level with which our students are participating athletic and doing the same in the classroom and the ongoing collaboration that that takes from all staff, coaches, everything, so thanks for highlighting that too. And now we're in the club again, sorry.
All right, moving on to our next agenda item in the superintendent's report.
Absolutely, so um, the next update is, is regarding the Dane County School Consortium known as DCSC. Uh, just for a quick overview, uh, Dane County School Consortium is a group of uh districts around Dane County uh that, that came together and initially when, when it was uh put together years and years ago, it was uh in a support of uh, uh, well, used to, to support youth apprenticeships across each of the districts and help with the assignment placement and monitoring of, of youth apprenticeships as well as uh working with the grant funding that goes along with it, with the youth, youth apprenticeships as well. Um, since this time, there are two issues at hand that, that bring me with a strong recommendation for us, uh, the language that's uh up for board vote later on, which would be to withdraw from the Dane County School Consortium inter-agency agreement overall and then uh authorize me as a superintendent to uh dissolve the Dane County School Consortium inter-agency uh due to the, due to the following factors. Uh, and then for that second vote, it would be the Broner School District vote, but it would have to be by two-thirds of the other boards that are currently members of the, of the Dane County Consortium, so it would be one of the potential, potential votes. Uh, the two issues at hand, currently the fiscal manager or fiscal manager for the uh Dane County School Consortium, excuse me, is the Monona Grove uh School District. Uh, Monona Grove did uh make all districts aware, um, not quite a, a year ago, but it's been maybe nine or 10 months ago, that uh they would not uh be interested in serving in the capacity of the uh fiscal, fiscal manager. Uh, each district was given an opportunity to take on the fiscal agency for uh, for the consortium, the Broner School District was one that did explore uh what they would make, what that would look like and then looking at uh the impact on our budget, uh office and workforce as well as the duality of the impact that it would have on our human resources uh department. Um, just related to such that we were not positioned to be uh that, that fiscal agency. Uh, of the, of the seventeen schools that are belonging, no district is, has been willing to take that responsibility on and many uh beginning approximately two weeks ago, began the process of uh removing themselves from the Dane County uh School Consortium and similar language that you seen uh before you about dissolving the agreement overall, uh knowing that uh no fiscal agent is, is available. I think equally and not equally, more importantly, um, the Broner School District has uh utilized internal F T E, um, and we're very happy to have Jenna, Jenna Johnson serving in the capacity of our career tech educated coordinator and that position was not part of the Broner School District when the agreement was, was, was sound, so we have a, a person that's directly uh can work with our students on a daily basis, know the families, know the students, is here at the high school and is continuing to build partnerships uh, uh, not, not across Dane County and, and abroad sometimes, depending on where uh we're looking at youth apprenticeships. Uh, we did hit a high of twenty apprenticeships this year, uh, which was a, which was a, a increase and I think if I was in your, in your position, I'd be asking what happens to the youth apprenticeships, they, they stay and we expand. Um, and so the youth apprenticeships would not uh go away, Jenna would still service a, a support. Uh, we do have the ability to look at the, there actually is a, a agency that uh, uh does the work of the uh youth apprenticeships uh in the form of the uh workplace development, Southern Wisconsin Workplace, Workplace Development and uh we are be able to directly access through Jenna's support of uh working, uh, working directly with them. Um, there's two things at hand here. One is just the Dane County School Consortium, in my opinion, is, is, is not, is not necessarily consortium for the Broner School District to be a part of and the very likelihood based off the steps that all the districts have taken and knowing that there's no fiscal agency that the consortium would even exist. Uh, we are before the board because per the bylaws, as far back as we were able to find was two thousand and nineteen, that this had to go to board vote for dissolve. Um, while we are under a governance model and generally this would be under pur, pur view, others are superintendent, I just felt it was appropriate based off a previously signed agreement that uh we take the action as, as it was clearly articulated, that would be board action, so. Jenny, anything I missed?
I agree.
Thank you.
So there will be board action then, board coming up, this would be a great time to start to surface any questions potentially related to any aspect of what was just presented to us, knowing that there will be again potentially two spaces to vote coming up. And Jenny, I appreciate you being here too, just kind of, right, those are the logical questions of what are we potentially losing by not being a part of this organization? Um, and just hearing kind of what's currently happening and where we have places to even grow, be able to do this work in-house. Um, I know right over the years, there's been a lot of things as a district that we have relied on support and partnerships with other districts, but as our district grows, I think there's been countless examples where we have not needed some of that financial resource to go out externally for those kind of shared resources, we can do them more internally.
Yeah, and I can speak a little bit more to that, the, the willingness and the partnership between other districts still exists. It doesn't take the, 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 then it works with our group, with that, other districts have hired similar positions like Jenna over the, over the years and so they still collaborate as a group, so she doesn't feel like she's on the island.
That's even more helpful to know.
Doing, doing the work solo, so it's, I think it's just uh kind of some of the times where the internal capacity has just grown among districts along with this bigger urgent area of there's no fiscal manager, so there's, there's, it could possibly dissolve on its own uh because of lack of, of fiscal management and I, I want to be thoughtful of the way I say this, but I, when you're thinking about the selection process of students really working in partnership, you want somebody in your organization doing that work that is aligned with the mission and goals of the Broner School District and the Board of Education. We have a, have a person that knows our values, knows our stance, knows our equity framework and is able to do that, that work from that perspective instead of uh, and that's so they don't, but they, they, right now that is not uh an agency that is under the purview of the Broner School District, so we don't really always have that, that space or to make sure that that's, that's the case.
And those things being said to ensure that like this is sort of inherently a part of your role, that we're not then all of a sudden adding more to the role that you're doing because we've sort of skirted this side partnership, so it's helpful to hear that you've got colleagues in other spaces supports that can help you.
Yeah, everybody's really helpful with each other, we meet monthly in person, so.
That's great. Any questions or thoughts from the board about what we've heard so far? Okay, we're gonna move on then, right, the lack of, all right, here we go. Thank you for the report and the updates, we'll obviously circle back to this momentarily. Um, taking a moment just to hear and check in on any public comment, Lori, I'm not aware of anything, let me, okay. All right, so then we will step into board action, so before we get back to the Dane County School Consortium, there's a suggestion about doing a moving of our social studies monitoring report related to when we get the data that's being used in that monitoring report, so um, Dr. Clarity, if you want to just put a little voice to this, because again, I need a change in calendar, obviously uh needs a board vote.
Great, so with the social studies monitoring report, one of the indicator metrics that uh came to fruition last year during vote was the need for uh data from the forward exam relative to the social studies. Uh, that data would not be real available until like May, maybe into June, after they have time to analyze it, work it, look at it through focus groups, the timing would put it uh potentially late June or, or July in terms of uh appropriate calendar time. Right now it is scheduled for April, where we would not have forward exam data to be able to provide.
You go ahead, and Dr. Clarity has just said the current indicators is building capacity and it was about the curriculum adoption process, which we completed last year, so that's why we need the new indicators, which would like to be the forward exam, and then that's the time that the board is available.
So for the new indicators, we, have we approved them? We have to approve them first.
Correct.
And so do, have we had a chance to look at them? I mean, we don't need the data, we just need the indicators.
Correct, so we still do the indicator uh piece of it, but we don't, we weren't in a position to do an April monitoring report on indicators that, uh, so we, that would also give us time to do the indicator report.
So in April, we'll hear updated indicators to vote on.
Well, based off our conversation last year, where forward exam data was, couldn't be an expectation of it, we wanted to be able to have that data as part of it.
Okay.
Because when, when we came out of building capacity, it was a discussion that we were used for, for the exam for that.
Right, I guess I'm just, I'm trying to make sure, I'm trying to understand, have we approved?
Yeah.
Because they're in here, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
The current indicators for two point one point four currently say building capacity and that's where we were and we completed those indicators last year because the indicator was during the curriculum adoption process.
Got it.
So now we're in a place where we would need new indicators, we haven't written them yet, and we would need those to be approved. What the conversation at that time was, was perhaps using forward exam data because that is aligned to social study standards, um, and we just wouldn't have that yet. So our board reporting um preparation process is usually a month out, so we actually should be doing that right now for the April twenty-first meeting, but knowing we don't, we have to rewrite the indicators first, we wanted to get ahead of moving the board meeting when we'd actually look at those results till later when we'd have those results.
So will we do the indicators then, the indicator approval will have to come before the monitoring?
Correct.
So will that take place then of the April monitoring report?
It could, you know, April or, April or May.
We also knew there was board workshop tonight about some of those results policies and getting clarity there, so we wanted to hear what it looks like and then we certainly could use April or May, April twenty-first, we have our science, monitoring report and our science curriculum adoption.
So just to play like sides of the process, so in theory, you could bring indicators to say, we're going to use a forward exam and we could say, yeah, we've changed our mind, but that is sort of, it's, makes sense for that to still push out, obviously, because we have to do the indicator review. I'm just trying to play the sides of like, right, where the vote has to happen and whatnot.
I think we're intentional to make sure we have enough time to review and agree that we approve to then anticipate the results that we expect, or start the data that we expect to have. So how long is it usually to take to review, sit on it, about a meeting, two meetings? How much do we have?
One indicator?
Yeah, I've never, you know.
Some have gone in the first race, some have gone back and forth.
Forever.
I think a lot of, I think a lot of tonight's conversation and workshop will help us understand overall results policy philosophies before we, I can, I can tell you how much of our indicator may be different. I mean, if, to Jen's point, if tonight's conversation comes that we, we don't want standardized status metrics anymore, I, I don't think that's where the conversation is going, but that's, that, that would be an example, well, I, I would write an indicator that would do that.
We have plenty of time, basically.
I, I never said plenty of time, it's a word.
We're calendaring.
Calendering, okay.
To anticipate time. Board, any further questions before we move ahead to a potential vote about at least shifting the monitoring report, knowing that we're going to have indicators to review in the time being? Okay, no further questions or discussion, then I would accept a motion to move results policy two dot one dot four, social studies monitoring to July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe, is there a second? Thanks, Christopher. All those in favor of moving the social studies monitoring report to July, signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion has been approved, so then we're dipping back then into our Dane County School Consortium, so again, this first motion um on the table is to authorize the superintendent to withdraw from the current agreement with the Dane County School Consortium. Is there a motion to approve such authorization?
So moved.
Juan Carlos, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Corby. All those in favor of approving and giving the authorization to Dr. Clarity to withdraw from the state, from the Dane County School Consortium inter-agency agreement, signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then just to revisit, this next vote is if things go far enough, right, so if no school district takes on the fiscal responsibility of this consortium or, or regardless of that, if, if districts go to this potential vote to dissolve the agency, this board vote right now is to give you permission to say yes on our behalf to also dissolve the agency completely.
Correct.
Am I, am I saying that for board members too to understand? So the vote we just took was to remove ourselves, this next vote is to give Dr. Clarity the authorization to then say we'd also vote in favor of dissolving, which would require the two-thirds vote of all the districts involved. So not a foregone conclusion, any more questions about that before I say it again and just really ruin it all by trying to say anything more? Okay, is there a motion to authorize Dr. Clarity to vote in favor of the dissolution?
Correct.
That's a really a word that's not been in my vernacular, of the Dane County School Consortium inter-agency agreement. Thank you, Christopher, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Juan Carlos, you're gonna make me say it all again, right? All those in favor of authorizing Dr. Clarity to vote in favor of the dissolution of the Dane County School Consortium inter-agency agreement, signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion has passed. All right, moving on through our agenda, any um OE eight, any communication updates from any board members and or general updates?
I do have a couple of general updates.
Yes, please.
So first of all.
I was hoping you did.
First of all, to the community, our sincerest apologies, uh, the last board meeting, the streaming uh apparatus went down for about apparatus went down for about 10 minutes and those 10 minutes were, in my opinion, very crucial. It was the start of the question and answer session with Chief Dresser. And Chief Dresser did an amazing job. I just wanted to go over what was asked of him. Chief Dresser mentioned, first of all, he, he went through about six to eight slides discussing the SRO situation and, and how implementation would actually work and be received. And several factors he mentioned led to the district where we previously had that SRO not renewing it. And one of the things that he did say was, one of the reasons was the political environment at the time revolving around the George Floyd incident that we all know too well. And my comment when I addressed it in the Q and A was that for families and students who look like me that, yes, it was politicized, but the feelings of anxiety, fear, anger, when we encounter law enforcement are very real. And that parents and students who look like me questioned that their children may be targeted. And I asked Chief Dresser, what would he do to begin building those relationships that he talked about in his presentation to ease some of that anxiety and to really let students know that SROs are here for their protection? And his answer was brilliant. And first of all, I want to applaud him because his first statement was that he was well aware of how parents of students who come from marginalized communities teach their kids the do's and don'ts when they encounter law enforcement. And that answer right there told me that he's aware, he's fully aware of what's going on and has some, some connection and empathy towards those feelings. And then he began to explain that he would have the SRO along with himself visit these safe spaces that students frequent. So he mentioned the GSA Committee, the Gender Support Group that Chris, Christopher and I are both parts of. He talked about visiting the Black Student Union and really having those conversations and bridging that relationship between the SRO and, and students. And then he wanted to step further and open this door to parents and said, hey, you can come visit me at the police station, visit the SRO, really talk about what you, what you have apprehensions about and open that, that dialogue. So I want to put that out to the community because that was missed and I thought that there was a very pivotal and important conversation that the, the community should have heard. Unfortunately, the streaming went down. You know, technology, things happen, but I wanted to share that, that feedback in this space and that I thought Chief Dresser did an excellent job answering the question that I was at, that I asked of him. And then the second thing, the African American History Bowl went on last week. The sectional took place last Wednesday and the regional last Friday. I want to thank board member John Porco, he was here, for, for helping out Wednesday. That was great. And then Friday, we had some nail biters. Both competitions ended in overtime, so to speak. We had to come up with even more questions for the teams to answer to break the tie in both cases. And, you know, they did a great job, but unfortunately, fortunately, Spring Harbor won the junior competition and Middleton won the senior division. So when our athletic director brought up Jamie Sims, I already have said to Dr. Clarity, I have to hear Jamie Sims, Athletic Director at Middleton, for an entire year, ah, we won. Next year, maybe. So those are my updates.
If I can expand. Thank you, brother. I want to thank Karen Stiles Glover and Rita Mortensen, who their planning and organization to bring, bring our auditorium to life, not just with the visuals, but all the setup and, and also Jason Rubel for all the technology components of it, to set up a buzzer system that would make Jeopardy look like it's nothing. So it's amazing. So thank you for everyone that, that was involved of it, involved in and while, you know, and especially want to highlight, all the scholars were amazing. But our, our junior division?
Yes.
We talk about the future of, of our organization and the amount of passion that each, each of the participants and the knowledge for junior division, that they had so many, they had, they had so many correct responses that no one got a question wrong at the junior division, you know? And it was actually just a matter of buzzer speed. But there was not one wrong question in finals of the, of the junior division between Broner School District, specifically Spina Oaks, and Spring, Spring Harbor from the Mass. I can't even say it.
Well, Jason had never talked about that. He said the, the middle schoolers were actually better at it than the high, the high schoolers were doing.
You don't, you don't have time for it.
You gotta get it out there and know both. We went into, probably got to find the butter name for it. We went into sudden death for, for it. It was literally a millisecond between buzzer strikes that would have took our team to the national, nationals in, in New Orleans. So.
I'd say something, Dr. Clarity.
Absolutely.
And thank you for putting up with us.
I appreciate it. I mean, in our board, basically.
I had, I had an update. Christopher, Dr. Clarity, myself and Chad went to the Wasbe Ethicacy Day at the Capitol last week. It was interesting and enlightening in a lot of ways. A couple of takeaways that I want to share. We focused, and we being kind of Wasbe generally, advocating around increasing special education funding because that's one of those issues that hits every school. The funding is right now just below 30%. And it ends up, you end up having to use a lot of your general funds to cover the gap in special education funding. And that's obviously subject to the revenue limit. So that hurts our ability to, to just operate our schools. And focusing on just, as I, as I said, re-indexing the revenue limit to inflation so that we see increases in revenue limit consistent with increases in costs. Those were kind of the issues around which we were focused on advocating. One thing I learned is that, because I, I often wonder who is opposed to increasing the funding for special education. And no one we spoke to would say that they were opposed to it. Even people that we anticipate will, will advocate against it. But I did learn that there is a talking point in the community of those opposed to it, that they think there's some sort of increasing funding for special education will incentivize over diagnosing students. So we really tried in a lot of our meetings to put that myth to rest, which is just ridiculous to suggest that we'll do, we would do that. And it undermines the integrity of our, of our staff who work so hard at, at, you know, working with students and assessing students. The second thing, probably the more practical takeaway that I had is that the dysfunction in Madison is to the point that it seems very unlikely and everyone seems to concede that we won't have an on-time budget this year. So when we think about what we do with staff increases, what we do with a finalized budget coming next fall, we may not even have, we may not have any idea what the next biennial budget looks like from the state. So that's kind of something that we as a board need to prepare for with our planning, how we go about this. So those are my takeaways.
Yeah, thank you for being there.
Good to join, Chris.
To share those updates. Chad, thank you. Other updates from board members? Okay. Thank you again, Corby, too, for the things that you've shared as well. Moving on to superintendent's consent agenda. Dr. Clarity, I'd actually like to pull the AGR report out just because I want to make sure that the board, that board members fully understand again what these are. I know there's a compliance piece that those are permissible in consent, but even for the sake of the community, because if you open those reports, they look awfully dense. And so to just feel like we're kind of sliding those through consent, I, I feel I'd like to have some voice to that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, I think we should, as a board, decide if we want that in consent.
Yeah, or just keep that. I mean, it might, it might be good for reminder's sake, but yeah, at least for the time being, if we can just have some kind of further understanding for board members and community, what it is that we are looking at here.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
So AGR stands for Achievement Gap Reduction. It is the next iteration. Some of you may have been familiar with Sage schools. AGR replaced Sage. So AGR is a form of State 8 that's directed specifically at grade levels K3. Again, evolved from Sage around 2017, 2018. Schools that were Sage schools automatically became AGR schools. Through our AGR contract, which is a five-year contract, we have to use one of three different strategies or a combination of those with which to address gaps in achievement. And so we can provide one-on-one tutoring, we can use the funding to support instructional coaching, or reducing class sizes at the K3 level to 18 students per class. And so then what you see here is as part of that, each of our schools is required to set performance objectives at beginning of the year for grades K1, 2, and 3 in both reading and in math. And then we need to report to the board mid-year, which is what this data is that you're seeing for you today. And then again, at the end of the year, our progress towards that, towards those performance objectives. So if you actually look at, is it helpful, Jen, if we walk through one? That'd be useful. Okay. So we pull up Stoner Prairie, just for example, and you can see the way that it is, it is organized. The first row, obviously, just with the headers. And then reading, you see they had 57 students at the beginning of the year. 51% were above that 25th percentile. So our schools have aligned with this data with the data that's required for reading plans per Act 20. And so you can see it's 51% were at or above 25% at the beginning of the year, 49% below. If you jump all the way over then to after the heavier black line there and you see the fall semester progress, they're now at 67%. Of students are at or above that 25th percentile and 33% are below the 25th percentile. So you can see kind of the growth that they've made from their baseline performance in the fall to after their fall semester progress. And then the last column, spring semester progress, is what we'll bring back to you at the end of the year. And then you can kind of see their strategy in the middle, their AGR strategy for this particular one. They're calling out the work of instructional coaching. And then as you scroll down, they've named instructional coaching really throughout. Other schools have a mix of different strategies. One of the, again, one of those three strategies were a combination of those. And then the other columns just explain kind of the rationale for how they believe that strategy will impact the student data. Does that help orient you to the report at all?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I have a question. How come in some of the reports, it doesn't look like the, the AGR strategy column is blank?
Got it.
On the full replies, I'm asking from a compliance standpoint, because I know that the reason these reports are being presented is for compliance purposes.
Right. Yeah, I think it's because the majority of our schools are using a combination of them and they fit within the rationale, but we can certainly go back.
And if it's, if it's not a compliance problem, I'm not worried.
Yeah. I think our compliance is to present it to the board. So we can fix that part of it and we can make sure in the spring that that's, if there's a better way for us, this is the state forum that we report the data on, probably not the most user-friendly, but we could certainly look in the spring if that's something the board's interested in presenting this data a different way.
Is there a way to maybe roll this into like our results reporting? I mean, it's just some different information just to kind of see.
Some of the, the points likely are, like, star data. So we're using for math, which kind of rolls into some of our R2 data. The AIMS Web data that we're using for that kindergarten example right now is not in a results policy, but that is our Act 20 data. If we're shifting any of the metrics or indicators for language arts, this might be one of them. So I do think all of these indicators are, the only exception would be we use number corner is the math metric at, at kindergarten because they don't take star math. So that would be the only indicator that's not captured within a larger data snapshot within a different R2 results policy at this point. But if that would be helpful to tease out, we certainly could. I don't believe in our results policies. We record out specifically K3 ever.
No, that would be, because I think we have 2.9, so we don't have that, that band. And if this is a data that's already being collected, that would be really helpful to give us the full picture.
Yep, most definitely.
And is there a reason we don't see the charters on here? Are they not AGR schools?
So my understanding is that Sage began, when the Sage process began and Sage schools were identified, they needed to have 30% of students that were identified as low income at that time. And then Sage schools automatically became AGR schools. At this point, schools can't apply to the AGR any further. So they were four years ago.
And then can you clarify, so I heard you say something about a five-year contract. Where are all of our schools on the same timeline with these? Or do you know, like?
I can follow up and, I don't exactly.
And then do you graduate out of this? Is this a perpetual thing that schools are always asked to do? Or this piece where you kind of said there's, with achievement reduction, is this something that all schools are asked to do at these levels in the state?
All schools that receive this funding need to report in this way.
Got it.
And so as long as we're receiving that funding, we will continue to report in this way.
Got it.
If this is different than ATSI status or CSI status, where some schools will exit after a specific period of time, slightly different.
Okay, so this is tied to additional funding to help support at these grade levels. So therefore this reporting is to justify the
How we're using the strategy and how we monitor our progress along the way.
That's helpful also.
But I can find out more about the specifics.
I don't know that that matters as much, just knowing it's perpetual, but just, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? That was super helpful. Thank you for, yeah, giving us some more voice to those.
There are different ways you have the spring data presented. We're certainly open that as well.
Well, and to keep it, I mean, if it's, if this is a form that's consistent with the state too, right? We certainly don't need any redundancy on your part of creating things that are, right? If this is how it goes to DPI, great. I think bringing that to us, but giving us some space to process is super helpful.
I think the question on the table for Clarity though was, is this something that is now, you want out of consent permanently or is it just pull, pull up and present when appropriate?
Thoughts?
I mean, I think it's something that, it, it's nice to have it out of consent so we can at least touch base on it. It is something that's of interest. This is, you know, the results that we, you know, are kind of focusing on. So to have it in consent seems kind of have to dig for it. So that would be my thought, but welcome to suggestions.
I agree. I agree.
And I feel similar, just in the sake of I'm a community member, right? And being able to see something that looks that robust, it feels a little bit odd to have not had some sort of awareness or conversation around it. Again, even though it's a compliance piece, I think that's something that directly related to achievement and results feels worth having in our dialogue.
Data points where we're not otherwise getting.
Yeah.
Right. That's useful.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So with all of that said, we are still in a space to officially approve the consent agenda. So any other questions or anything additional about the items there? Hearing none, then the superintendent's consent agenda is approved, is presented. And again, please look over then our board's consent agenda. Any questions on that? Hearing none, the board's consent agenda then is also approved. Future dates, just want to make a note, we do not have another board meeting prior to the election. So just making sure that voicing to the community and fellow board members that the election will be taking place before we reconvene in this space, which is pretty wild to think about. So looking forward to having Christopher and Joe on the ballot. Yeah, and taking time to, to exercise your right to vote. And we have future meeting dates on there as well. So with that said, we will then shift into workshop. I do have John calling in. So John, I'll try to do some prefacing and if you want to bring voice to anything, I'll do my best to kind of elevate you so folks can hear. But we'll shift into workshop mode and I would like to just kind of give, I think, a general preface to the items that you have. So if you recall, a number of weeks ago, Meredith and John and I agreed to kind of do some of the back work to give us some things to think about and work from when it comes to revisiting our results policies. And one of the main things that we were contemplating was trying to get more alignment between the strategic framework and Journey of a Lifelong Learner that was created as a result of deep and rich community input and having that really be reflected more obviously and maybe in, in general in our results policies. So thanks to John for putting So thanks to John for putting on a lot of the kind of grunt work of taking our conversations and giving us a starting point. I really feel that for the sake of some of these workshops, having something to work from, I feel gives us a chance to be more fruitful and productive than attempting to kind of build from scratch as a group of seven. So super appreciate the conversation and time with Meredith and John's work behind the scenes. You do have two documents from John. We will start with the one that is the kind of draft rewrite of the results policies themselves. The second document is kind of the beginning of what I consider to be almost a guidebook to help us as board members be able to determine what reasonable progress really is. And John, Meredith and I talked about this, the title of that second document does include operational expectations, but we agreed that those would not necessarily be the same for operational expectations, because that vote is something a little bit different. Yeah.
Are we doing workshop?
Yeah, we're in workshop.
Are we on with the tables? I bring the people.
Yeah, can I, I'll just finish my spiel and then we can, is that all right?
Okay.
Okay.
Wait for the.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, I got a little excited this week, I should think ahead here. And then we'll spend our time again tonight on the first draft of the results. My hope is that we don't get stuck in verbiage. We have plenty of space to wordsmith. My hope is we can talk more big picture about the general structure and what we think of these policies as outlined in this way as a starting point and thoughts and feedback about that. So, John, anything initially you want to add, and then we'll take a pause to kind of rework the room? Okay, I got a thumbs up very quietly through. All right, so we can take a quick pause, should we take kind of an official five minutes and just revamp and board members can get their documents up in front of them and running, and we'll get set for some discussion.